Board of County Commissioners, now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by the pledge. Mr. Jones will lead us in prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you this day for giving us this day. Father, we thank you for this place we call home. We ask that you would be with each and every one of us today as we make decisions. We consider to be the most prudent, the wisest, and the best choices for the citizens of Franklin County. Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for discretion and judgment in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the brotherhood which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries. Next will be Department Director's report, Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
Been hot.
Yeah, it's been hot.
Just got a couple items. One, we didn't get no inmates today, so I don't see no inmate squad working, so they kept all crews in.
Was it too hot?
No, I don't know what they got going on over there. Okay. Something going on anyway. Usually they'd have them out.
Same stuff went on last week.
Okay. And an office, I know we've been talking about an office over at the road department, and you know that old office we got, it used to be an old house, which they made it into an office, which is, I want to roughly say probably eighty years old. And, you know, we're trying to get a new office put in, so we sent out a couple of bids, we ain't got no prices back in on it yet, so, but try to keep it, you know, under two hundred thousand dollars, we can get an office built.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Howard, have you gotten with Aaron at finance to see how much money you exactly have?
We're gonna try to pay for it, the payment plan like we do the equipment, you know, we bought it with it, I think it's forty-six, forty-eight thousand dollars a year we have in there for that. So it should be paid off at the end of this year. The M three thirteen we bought four years ago. And hopefully we set up a payment plan and try to, you know, pay for it, otherwise you ain't gotta up the budget and nothing, so.
I make a motion that you get the ball rolling, get it financed and...
But let's get over it, if you build something good, it's gonna cost, so.
Yeah.
If you get something cheaper, then...
And make sure you get it big enough for...
Yeah, mosquito control, you mentioned that, I have mosquito control too, so.
And a layout.
Right.
For the mosquito control.
Okay. And we had in a little bitty building over here, it's been there for years, a little toy of a toy, so.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries.
I got one more item, which I got the money, you know, in my budget, the time to pay for it, is the M three thirteen we got, which is thirteen years old, and it's gotta have a new motor put in it, which is roughly gonna be between twenty and twenty-three thousand going to be fixed. And that's why we dig our boat landings and stuff out, we didn't dig ditches, so.
How much is new?
Well, we got a new one now, you're looking at probably two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, I think you call it. Yeah, that's, we just bought one, which has got the bush head and all on it, and a ditch bucket, but it, you know, it don't dig ditches as good as what the other one does, and you don't wanna put that new one in your boat landers and all that saltwater and stuff, so.
You got the money to get the motor in there?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion you get it done.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so that means you'll have money for both items. The first one, you, we made a motion, for both items, we made a motion.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Does the board members have anything for Mr. Howard?
Just keep on doing it. Good morning. I know it's raining a lot, the grass is growing fast, but try to keep up with it.
Do it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item number five, my report. The Forgotten Coast Parrot Head Club will be hosting their second annual, the longest date event, which is a benefit of Alzheimer's Association, on Saturday, June twenty-third. This event will include a five K run and a five K walk, starting at seven AM, and it begins, it begins at St. George Island Lighthouse Parking Lot, and then goes west on Goydrive until about Tenth Street, and then turns around and use the same path to return to the Lighthouse Parking Lot. Sheriff Smith is aware of the five K run and walk, and himself is participating in the Dunk Tank Event that will be held later that same day. The Forgotten Coast Parrot Head Club would like the county's assistance with cones and signage to warn drivers on the adjoining streets of the race. Board action to authorize Mr. Neighbors to provide the cones and allow the club to erect the warning signs.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries.
Another item, but I'd like to say good luck to Sheriff Smith and the Dunk Tank Event. Item number six, as staff continues, and I say this because all your department heads are here at the moment, as staff continues to update the county's personnel policy and procedures manual, a policy is needed to state who is allowed to drive county vehicles after hours for official business. All I need right now is board action to authorize the county's labor attorney to create this policy. I'll bring it back for your review, and then you can decide if you want a policy changed or amended in any way.
So moved. Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Just one, just one comment, Mr. Chairman. I think the important words here is official business.
Yes, ma'am.
And so it's for official business only?
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries.
That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item, and also one, Howard, here, as well as, well, everybody. It's item number four of my report. Inform the board that back on May fourteenth, when I was at an email range, I received an email from Mr. Robert Brown of FAC, which included a letter from FDOT on the subject of debris removal after hurricane. A copy of the full letter is attached to my report, but I'm quoting from the FDOT letter. And again, it's a little disappointing, I think Pam's got some of this information, but this letter is really intended for the counties, but to my knowledge, the county didn't get it directly. FDOT sent this letter to FDEM, and then, you know, they sort of talked about it, but I think, personally, I think FDOT should have notified the counties directly. But in any event, this is a letter quoting from the FDOT letter. After the initial push of debris to the side of a roadway, this course is after hurricane, which allows emergency and other vehicles to pass safely, FDOT will conduct one pass to collect storm-related debris that fell within the right-of-way of the state highway. FDOT will not remove other debris, whether storm-related or not, that is placed on the state highway system for collection after the one pass is completed. All the debris that is left for collection along the state highway system after the one pass FDOT has completed, whether placed on or off the state highway system, will be the responsibility of the local government with jurisdiction over the area where the debris is located. Mr. Brown, in his notes on the email, added that the FDOT letter is likely due to some confusion following last year's storms and those in two thousand sixteen. After FDOT debris teams came through and picked up storm debris in the right-of-way, new debris would subsequently show up the next day. We, and this is FAC, recommend that county's communicate its debris policy to the county citizens before hurricane season. So that's quotes from Mr. Brown. I have spoken to Pam Burnell about this, and she has turned spoken to Fonda Davis, but I believe the board needs to contemplate what this means to the county's response. From my entire career with the county, we have relied upon FDOT to manage the state highway system. Only on rare occasions has the county picked up debris from US ninety-eight. US ninety-eight runs for almost sixty miles through the county, and there are hundreds of houses, if not thousands of houses, which, who deposit storm debris on US ninety-eight. The county does not have the in-house resource to collect all that debris. In the two thousand sixteen hurricane season, I believe FEMA reimbursed the county some two-hundred thousand dollars for debris removal by both the landfill and the road departments, and we did it in-house. And I haven't verified that number, but it was, it was about two or three hundred thousand. It was, you know, we can, we can manage that kind of debris. The two thousand hurricane season did not seriously affect property along US ninety-eight, so there was not that much debris. So the last large debris effort in the county, FDOT was doing at least three passes to collect debris. Reducing the pass to one is going to mean that, is going to mean that most of the debris will be left for the county. Instead of having several hundred thousand dollars of debris removal costs, Franklin County might now be looking at several million dollars of debris in a true hurricane hit. While FEMA, under close scrutiny, will reimburse the county for debris removal, the amount of debris that is normally left on US ninety-eight is going to create quite a cost for someone to pick up. And my closing comment, this is a vivid example of the state shifting the responsibility and the cost of hurricane recovery to local government. I mean, yeah, FEMA will reimburse us, but now we're into a system and a process that we have not done in Franklin County, where we have now have to manage all the debris on the US ninety-eight. It's a tremendous shift in what we've been responsible for, and I'm very disappointed in the state.
Well, I'm gonna say something on that. What we need to do, and I'm gonna put it in form of a motion, is get with all the counties in the storm area, and let's challenge this for the state. I mean, bigger counties can afford this. A county like Franklin, Liberty, Gulf, Waukulla, they can't afford that. I mean, you're doing all this, you're gonna have your people doing a whole lot of extra work, that's gonna cost a whole lot of overtime and stuff, and it's gonna take more than one sweep to get it up, and they know it.
Sure they know it. In fact, I, my prediction, Commissioner, is that they'll come in as fast as they can after storm and say they've done their one pass before even the residents are timed to get to their homes. I know what's gonna happen.
They, they have to do it now. You know what they're gonna do when they come in on Thursday. They ain't gonna give people time to even put nothing out there.
And we probably have the worst scenario, I'll be honest with you, because US ninety-eight, we have a whole series of houses on the seaward side of US ninety-eight, and this is traditionally how it's happened, and I don't, and I understand that residents are prepared for this. When the storm comes in and seaweed and docks and decks and everything gets washed up on their property, they take it from the water side and they put it on the DOT side. If I put term this letter right, DOT is gonna write down there and say, well, that seaweed didn't fall in our right-of-way, we're not picking it up. That dock didn't fall in our right-of-way, we're not picking that up. And that stuff's gonna sit there. I'm very upset with the state of Florida.
Well, not, not only that, but with the mowing regimen they have now, they don't mow, but like once or twice a year on ninety-eight anyway, and then you add the debris there, that's accident waiting to happen is what it is. So I think you're right, Mr. Lockley, I think you need to write, you know, we need to write a letter and say, you know, we're different than anybody else, you know, because we don't have all this mowing going on in Franklin County enough, so.
Commissioner, I think the people that we have most in common, Gulf, Gulf and Waukulla and maybe Dixie, we all account, because those all have a US Highway going through, and they're all rural counties. If you don't mind, I would say, let's, let's see what those counties are doing, and let's see what their response is, and see if we can band together and work with counties on our same side. Liberty County may have a similar problem, but it's not coastal, and I don't, I don't know how, you know, they may be able to manage their stuff, I don't know. I've got to contact them, but I was trying to think about counties that have the same core situation, even Levy County might be in the same boat as we're in.
Yeah, okay. Well, I put that in form of a motion, band together if they will.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Only thing I would add to the latter is potential millions of dollars that would cost the county upfront before you get reimbursed by FEMA, and where are we gonna get that kind of money from?
That's why I bring it up. So you got to work for the debris removal, who have the resource to be able to hold this, because, you know, debris removal, we went through that nightmare last year, it was months after the storm before we started getting our collection. But if you'll allow me not to violate, I will contact the county managers of these counties we talked about. And let me do it fast and writing a letter, if you don't mind, Commissioner. Let me, let me get some, some verbal dialogue going, and I'll come back to you all with a report of what they're doing.
Okay.
Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lockley amends this motion.
Yeah, I amend my motion.
I amend my second.
Motion, second, has been amended to reflect what Mr. Pierce has said. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, while they're here, I wanna, I wanna bring up something to, to do with this. We've talked about it before, I'm sure. In our current policy, the, with roadside debris, with yard trash, let me put it that way, because it's not, it's supposed to be yard trash. Every Amnesty Day, it's free to take to the landfill, every, the month, first, every Monday it's free. It's actually free Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we just pay to go get it. So I would like to make a motion at least to the end of this year, we try it out as an interim basis, if it's yard debris, that the residents can bring it without a tip and fee at the landfill. Maybe that'll give us some alleviation to so much stuff being on our roadsides, because it's free anyway, we're just, we're paying to pick it up, so, it's already free. That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can we weigh in on the, that'll be your department, right?
Yes.
Can we hear what he's saying?
Mr. Davis, they want your comments on this issue.
I don't have a problem. We get a lot of concerns from the citizen with the same questions, why you gonna charge if we bring it in and we can put it on the side of the road all day long? Makes sense to me.
Okay, so you're fine with that?
I'm fine with, it's trial basis, that right, Commissioner?
That's right, to the end of the year.
End of the year.
Yep.
Now, this, this is not Amnesty Day every day of the week, it's yard debris on...
No, it's only yard debris. Only yard debris, only for residents.
Yes.
Not for businesses.
I've had the same type of comments, fellow loaded his trailer up, took it to the landfill, and they were gonna charge him, so he'd come back and put it on the side of the road. And he no longer takes his yard debris to the landfill. So I've had the same issue.
To go a little further, could we specify in the motion, not contractors, that this doesn't apply to contractors, only residents? Because to me, if a contractor's charging a resident to bring it there, he should pay the tip and fee. I mean, that's fair.
I'll amend my motion to, to reflect that it's only residential, non-commercial basis.
Thank you.
Yard debris.
Commissioner Massie, you second?
Yes, sir.
Amend your second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let the record reflect, the motion, second, has been amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries. Do we have any other comments from Mr. Howard from the board? There be no further comments? Keep up the good work, Howard. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Just a few, I have to update you on the recycling site in Caryville should be up and running Thursday. We had located right off of Gray Avenue on the football field, the school, give us a little piece to work with. Howard, come in and lime rock it. So we should, we should have it open by Thursday.
That looks good, right there, where you're gonna put it?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's got a fence somewhere, it won't get out in the street that bad right there.
Right. Yeah, we're gonna actually put the privacy fence up like we do in area of the site.
Okay.
Yes.
Y'all seen where you took the fence down and lime rocked it?
Yes, sir. All right, next item is that the soccer field has been sodded and irrigated at D.W. Wilson. So we're just waiting to let the grass catch and be ready to play soccer on it.
Looks good, too.
What about the basketball?
It has, that was my next, it's been, it's in place, we're waiting now for the asphalt to cure, it's been striped, and we're gonna put the goals up. Hopefully we have that this week also.
When I can shoot ball?
Hopefully Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Play the press game.
Yeah. The other thing that I wanna mention that Mr. Pierce brought up about that storm debris, we have the state now as it is with the Highway ninety-eight, from time to time, they'll call us, they were patrolled for, but we use our knuckle boom trucks to pick up. So I don't know if that's something you wanna bring to their attention, no, so we do help them pick up on ninety-eight. We don't encourage anyone to put out on ninety-eight, but it happens, and the state called us, and we assist.
Fun, does the state call you, or is...
It's a contract.
The contract?
It's a contract.
And I know right now, east of, you know, the Land Ark area and east of that...
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot of stuff on the side of the road right now. I guess it's that little blow that we had a few weeks back.
Yes, and, and they called us, but we have to take care of our side first, so.
Yeah.
I told them, once we catch up, we'll be glad to come in and help them.
Any other items, Mr. Davis?
That's it.
Any items from the board members to Mr. Davis?
Chairman, I got to ask some questions, I'm sorry. Fonda, could we check and see, I know that last time we did day of ball, which the season's all, all been over, some of them are headed to state. We did it in East Point, and they rotate it, but can we check and see what it would cost to put up lights at all the fields in East Point? Because some of them don't still have lights, just so we'll know.
Lights at all the fields in East Point?
Yeah, I think there's one that completely doesn't have any lights.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I wish the board would consider trying to find some more property. We congested, putting lights, we put nets, so with this key add, and it's, otherwise it's gonna be a safety issue.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lockley, you had a comment?
Yeah, on that basketball court out in D.W., did we have enough to put light for you? Yeah. Did we have money enough to put lights?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we contact the TDC, see if they got any money for, put some lights on that basketball court out there.
Yeah, because lights don't score too big on FERDA, if I remember correctly, so that's, that's a problem, you know?
But the TDC might have.
Yeah, I just wanna let you know, going to TDC would be better than trying to rely on a FERDA grant, because you're not, you know, we're not gonna get money from the state for that.
All right.
Is that in form of a motion, Commissioner Lockley?
It is, it is, yeah.
Do we have a second? Motion made by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Not motion carries.
At the last board meeting, we brought up about the Fort Liff and the knuckle boom truck, so I've been working with the company, one of the sales was on, finally leased the Fort Liff, and also leased a knuckle boom truck, so we just waiting on information from them.
You got the money in your budget for that, right?
No, sir, I was hoping to lease with, with the trade-in or to sell some of the other old equipment, we can use it for a down payment.
Oh, okay.
And then by that time, the payment be picking up after we get through with some payments.
Okay.
On track this.
Anything else, Mr. Davis?
That's it.
Anything from the board for Mr. Davis? There be no common or comment? Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Burnell, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. For some reason, I don't think my report got in here, but we do not have any action items. Did want to inform the board that we are working on our RFQ for our debris monitoring and debris removal. I spoke with CDR McGuire, which is our consultant, and they agreed to do it pro bono for me this time, looking at the RFQs and making sure that we are in compliance and have the language that is required by FEMA. And then on another note, Alan, Alligator Point, I know he got y'all to approve to turn it over to CDR McGuire. There is no admin fee there.
Right, right. We have, I have contacted CD, I haven't brought up y'all, because basically you all are paying me to do some stuff, so, so if I'm not gonna do it, they'll, they'll get paid, and so I'm waiting for a task order from them about the cost. I mean, it's fairly straightforward, well, Alligator Point's not necessarily straightforward, but some of the other projects are, just a matter of doing the request for reimbursement and the closeout, so I'm waiting for a number from them, but I'm not too worried about it being an exorbitant amount of number. I already talked to them directly, things pretty straightforward. The Alligator Point issue, which I want to report, is, is a whole nother bucket of worms, and we'll get to that.
So if we don't pay either admin fees, we'll pay them the admin fee.
Yeah, that's what, they'll do a task order, because that's where the contract's written. They will give us an estimate of, well, how many hours they think that it's gonna take.
Yeah.
Well, I go for more, I mean, if we've opened the bids, I mean, you're talking a couple of hours, I mean, there's only gonna probably at most two draws, two request for reimbursement, just to finish the road.
Say, where we put asphalt down?
Yeah, so you're only talking a couple of hours of work, I'm not, I'm not worried about the tens of thousands, it might be, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, you know, something.
Okay. Is that it, Ms. Pam?
Yes, sir.
Any comments for Ms. Pam?
Just one.
From the board?
Good luck.
Thank you.
I know you're gonna have to have some, but I think you'll be fine, don't worry about it, and I hope you're feeling better when you come back.
Me, too.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I want to, we were talking about the state going down the highway, you, you know about what that'll cost? That's for the state to pick up debris, what, like they doing, and they trying to push it down on us. You got a guest to make?
No, sir. If you remember, every time we've had a storm, we've had this problem with them. This is not something new. This is something that they're saying now that they're going to enforce. If you remember before, y'all contacted them, back, Waukulla and Franklin contacted them because they did their first push, and then people put stuff out, and we had to go back and basically fight with them to do the second push. So this is not something new, this is something that they're saying, we're not gonna do this anymore. And what they mean by first push is trees that fall down, or where we cut up trees and throw them to the side of the road on ninety-eight. Those is, that's what the state considers storm debris when it comes to their road. They don't consider the seaweed, which I've had that argument with them, I consider that storm debris, but that's on private property. They bring it to the road, so therefore, it, it is part of the county's responsibility to pick up that storm debris, no different than inland, East Point, in there, communities where people's trees fall down, they come up and put them to the side of the road. We pick those things up, that's part of our debris pickup. So that's the way the state looks at it.
Well, it's crazy, because they'll write you a ticket if you go in and do something on the water, and give you a state ticket, because it's their property when you start to do it.
I agree with you. They, you can't even put up a sign without getting a permit, but it's, again, request is all we can do. Push back on it.
We fought a little, the last big one was two thousand twelve, was Debbie, we had a, we had a huge fight with them back then. They finally gave in and helped us on Alligator Point, and we had like six or eight houses knocked down, it was a nightmare. I know this has come up, and I haven't, I haven't followed the details, but when the hurricane went through with the last year in the Keys, and man, they, they, I think the D O T did leave Monroe County hanging, I mean, that debris was out there a long time. I mean, they've just decided they're not gonna help clean up the state of Florida after hurricane, and it's really disappointing.
Getting less and less help from the state, and I'm with Alan, you know, where our contracts and things are written now, I think the state is looking at maybe cutting out their twelve and a half percent, and then the county will have to restore all of it.
And that, the state don't really do the cleanup, what, what they call them, do it, what that company name?
Well, the state would do a contract with somebody and hand, and help, and help manage the debris, and I think they're trying to get out of that. In fact, didn't you tell me they're not even doing pre-storm, pre-hurricane anymore?
As far as I know, they're not doing, they're not doing pre-storm contracts, they're waiting until there's a disaster strikes, and then they do an emergency bid, is my understanding.
The state of Florida's not even getting ready for a storm, because they're not gonna have a contract they're ready to assist with.
And that's what creates problems, is the way, and they offer more money, your contractors are gonna leave and go there. That is why in our R F Q, the county, we're, I'll get with Michael and talk about that, do a bid bond, we discussed that at the governor's. So the only way you're gonna be able to keep that contractor there is if there's a bid bond.
Yeah.
And it's written to the county, and if they don't show, or if they up and leave before the job's finished, county gets that money. So the only way you're gonna keep them in place, that was discussed at the governor's.
I agree.
Is we storm ready?
If people in this county have their plans together, yes, sir, we are. As far as our office, we stay storm ready twenty-four seven, all year long.
Any other comments from Mr. Brunel? Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Lovestran, Extension Office Director.
I do not have any items in my report that require board action today.
Does the board have anything from Mr. Eric this morning? Being no comment from the board, thanks for coming in, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Next will be Ms. Lisa, Lisa Lance, Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I only have one action item, and that's to request the approval from the board to officially advertise, starting this Thursday, for the full-time library assistant positions that we have available in both locations. This request is due to a resignation of two staff members, one from each location, each of those staff members are relocating, one to another county and one out of state. So that ad would come out this Thursday, right through July thirteenth, and we will hire from, hopefully, the entire pool that we receive.
Pleasure to the board.
Well, you got two of them in there.
Yes, sir.
Stay moved.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The other things I want to point out, we have a lot of activities going on for the next couple of months through summer reading. Today, actually, we have our summer gardening program with Les from Wakulla, and that's on summer vegetable production. So we invite you to East Point at one-thirty for that. This week also, on Thursday, on Wednesdays and Fridays, we have our Rockers and Readers Group for our children, it's ages K through six, and that's at eleven o'clock on, at East Point, and eleven o'clock on Fridays in Carabelle. And that's part of the summer reading programs, the kids come together and they learn about different instruments, and this year they're actually making different instruments throughout the weeks of the program. On Thursday, we have magician Michael Krosniak, he's going to be conducting a magician workshop with the children, that's at East Point at two o'clock, and Carabelle on, at four o'clock, and that is this Thursday. We do have, for the ladies, the Mumble mammogram bus that was supposed to be here a few months ago, is now in operation again. So on June thirtieth, from nine to two, in Carabelle, we are offering free mammograms, and the Florida Department of Health, the Florida Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program, they are working with us on that in ages, women between ages of fifty and sixty-four, of low income and with no health insurance, you can come and get a voucher. There is no registration for this, just be at the library between nine and two on June thirtieth. That will be in the parking lot. And we will be closed on July fourth, like all other county offices. And I do want to give a shout out to our, since I was here last time, we did have our music recital on May twenty-fourth for Music Second Language twenty eighteen. We had seventeen students complete that program this session, and sixteen of them performed the day of the program, and we had another day that we had one student to perform for us in Carabelle. They did an outstanding job, we had more than seventy people in attendance for that program. And that program is fully funded with a key sponsorship by Rock by the Sea, and we hope to get that going again for this fall for the next session. So more information will be coming in the future about that. And everybody can check our website, and for our calendar of events, we still have a lot going on between now and the end of July for summer reading.
Any, any comments from the board members from Ms. Lisa this morning?
Yeah, you say you're too short, that, that's not gonna interfere with your hours.
Uh, yes, sir, sorry, I did miss that on, on my thing. On, for East Point, that does shorten us a little bit, and so we are gonna go to the nine to five instead of the nine to six. We've had low attendance between five and six, as it is, and then a lot of our volunteers, they actually are gone for the summer, because they go to the cooler climate during the summer. So we are gonna convert to nine to five, Monday through Friday in East Point, and I, it will be probable that I will do that for the month of July in Carabelle as well, because we will just still have one full-time staff, volunteers and myself covering.
Well, make sure you put it on, on the website.
Yes, it, it is there, and it's located on our signs, and we do Facebook posts and so forth, and it is in the paper in our, my weekly Library Corner article.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the Commissioners? Thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Next will be Mr. Jason Puckett, Airport Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just got a couple of quick updates on some projects going on at the airport. As you know, we had a new airfield lighting system that was put in, all that work is complete and finished. The airfield drainage improvement that was going on, substantial completion inspection was conducted with the F D O T on June sixth, and now the contractor is addressing the final punch-out list, we'll schedule a final walkthrough with him once they complete their items. Commercial access road, which has been going on for quite some time now, trying to get permitting done. Avcon met with the Northwest Florida Water Management District, and they have finalized the permitting plan. Avcon is now final, finalizing the design and permit drawings, and should be ready to go out for bid by the end of this month on that project. The economic development plan that was given a little while ago from B R P H, they are now preparing a step-by-step implementation plan for the economic development, and this should be ready by the end of July, and that will complete the scope of work for that economic development grant. And then lastly, is our airfield marking project. We, we have three runways, two of the runways, we are, we are getting re-striped and remarked. We met with the F D O T from Tallahassee, and I believe we have, we have negotiated and, and have received approval to receive all three runways remarked. So what we're doing now is we're negotiating with the, the state contract for the marking to be done, and as soon as we get the, the quote in and we all feel good about it, then, then we can, the county can authorize them to proceed. So that'll be fully funded by the F D O T. But that's, that's all I have as far as updates on the airport.
Any comments from the board members, Mr. Puckett this morning? Being no comments, thank you for coming in.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Next on the agenda will be public comment, three-minute time limit. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is James Donald, I am the president of the St. George Island Civic Club. And we are just excited to, to be here, we understand the tremendous challenges you have in managing our government here in the county, and we appreciate your good work. The club has four hundred thousand members, I'm sorry, four hundred members. Soon, soon to be, soon to be four hundred thousands, four hundred members, stand corrected. But I'm here to applaud your decision with the corridor overlay plan. We are working closely with Commissioner Jones to ensure that we get that right, and we have all our citizens involved. He is attending our general membership meeting of the Civic Club on Thursday night, and I want to take this opportunity to invite y'all to come. We start at six-thirty at the J Abbott Firehouse upstairs, and we have a social hour, great opportunity for you to get to know many of our members. We're also sharing this morning an exciting new initiative, and that is a strategic plan that we want to put together that builds upon the corridor overlay plan that y'all have brought. We just anticipate you're gonna have questions and things as we go down the road in terms of our interests and concerns. And so, don't want anybody to get, get afraid or get too excited, we're planning on, we, we would like to partner with you. We know what a tough job you have. We have some great resources on the island, men and women who've retired to the island as an example, from various experiential backgrounds, who have been grant writers and who are visionary, and we might be able to do some things in collaboration in this county that can assist you. I'm a volunteer on a number of different activities in the county, and, and they are volunteers too, God has blessed us immensely. So in closing, I want to just invite you to come out and say we are humbled to live in this beautiful iconic environment called Franklin County and on the island. The island is a county and state, indeed a national treasure, and we want to protect it, and we want to work with you in getting that done. And our strategic planning is designed to do exactly that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comment. This is a public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Johnny Bird. Appalachian Cola, first black policeman's Appalachian Cola. Reason I'm here, I was in Ms. Skipper, the Praiser's office yesterday, and I found out that the fifteen feet that joined my property on Sixth Street there, the, the city of Appalachian Cola has said they has no need for that property. The county does no maintenance on, in the city, and she said, that's unbillable property. Really, it's not worth anything. And I asked her what would be a reasonable price to pay the county for that property, and I suggested fifteen hundred dollars. She said, that's way more than I would suggest. This property has been in my family for fifty years, and they have charged us for billable property, which is not billable property, she said. So I want to, I had to buy property and I came here to build on, 'cause I thought my parents had left me something. So I want to get this property squared away, so when I leave it to my kids, if they decide to build, they can. And I'd like to, the clerk on the thirty-five feet, which they hadn't paid taxes on, but nine certificates on it, and that means people just only in it for the money. So I agreed with them, got a deal for their thirty-five, and I'd like to pay the city. But at fifteen feet, we'll have a piece of property that I will be willing to pay the whole taxes on, and I can leave for my kids to have a piece of property that's worth something, and we won't be paying taxes for something that's no good. So I'm asking the city to let me have this piece of property, fifteen feet.
Yeah, the piece of property, you talking about, it's in all my district, and like you said, the way it's set up, it's in the middle of the lot, it's not like on the alley side. Fifteen feet is right in the middle of the property, between the front, then the fifteen, then the thirty-five, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it's no good, it's nobody without.
I have a diagram.
The way it is, plus, we not in the utility business, we not gonna put no utility, we don't do nothing. We gave it to the city back then today, for them, and they, but they had that piece on it, but it converted back to the county. But if this gonna straighten out this man property, he came back from, he went out of town, went to work, he, he thought he could build his house over there, he couldn't. That's why he had to go to East Point and buy a whole land, now he looking out for his children, trying to get it straight. He not getting it to sale, he getting, trying to get it straight for it, he got some children from the retire here, another fifteen, twenty years, ten or fifteen years. And I don't see it'll be benefit to us, 'cause it'll go on the tax roll at one whole piece. The way it's lined up now, it's all messed up.
She also said that they would have to go back, and we adjust my taxes if we didn't get it straight, because I'm, that fifteen, that fifty feet I have is not billable property. And my family has been charged all these years with billable property by the county, which I'm not worried about what happened in the past. I just want to get this straight.
Okay, well, we don't take action under public comment, this will need to be put on the agenda for an agenda item?
Well, we've already voted, we've already voted it down.
I know, but if it want to be reconsidered, it's gonna have to be put on the agenda to be reconsidered, because we don't take action under public comment.
Mr. Chairman, don't we have a timeline that we have to wait before we bring an, an item back up to the board that's been voted down before? Don't we have six months or whatever before it can be brought back when it's voted down?
Turner.
The only policy that I'm aware of is whenever your, your development application requests have been turned down, there's a one-year waiting period. Certainly set the discretion of the board when and if you put another item back on the agenda. But the only rule that I'm aware of is, again, if your development applications have been turned down.
But it's not the bill.
That's, that's correct.
Is the property, how long is it, is it from property line to property line?
Well, the, yes, it's, I got the front part of the property, the corner part of it, the fifty feet, then the, then the other fifteen feet is between me and what the clerk had. The clerk actually owned theirs longer than fifty years, 'cause my daddy bought his fifty from the clerk. And, and I returned home thinking I had a place to build, after they, paying taxes after they died, I had the bills to come to me in Alabama. So when I retired, I was looking forward to coming here and building, and I ended up having to buy some property. So I want to get this thing straight, we've been paying taxes all these years, thinking we had a billable property. I go down to the Praiser's office and find out it wasn't billable property, and it was being taxed that way.
Is this, that fifty by a hundred?
Yeah, it would be a hundred if you join the whole, once you get the whole thing together, yeah.
By sixty, fifty by sixty.
It's fifty by sixty.
So what I'm hearing, I'm gonna add this to the next meeting agenda, and what you guys want, based on the questions you're asking right now, is that drawing, basically?
Mike, let me, let me stop you. Under public comment, this board takes no action.
Okay.
So the action of putting it on an agenda or anything else will have to happen after we're out of public comment.
Okay.
And if Mr. Lockley, whoever wants to make a motion, the board agrees, don't agree, we do not take action under public comment. But we do appreciate your comments and understand your concerns. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
A public comment, who's next? Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Betty Cummins, Alligator Point, and...
I'm Susan David, Alligator Point.
I remind you, you have three minutes.
Yes. I just, you do have something in your packet from me. I wanted to make sure that it gets included in, in the minutes and on the public record. And addressed, if possible, I had sent this previously to Alan and a commissioner, and was told that once he got back from his vacation, that he would address, at least give the information to the county attorney, so that any liability issues could be mulled over by Mr. Schuler. But I, I watched the last commission meeting, and there was nothing brought up about it. So I did send this to your clerk, and she was gracious enough to include it. I just want to get it on the record, and so I'm gonna just read what I wrote to you to make sure that that's captured. "I'm a retired respiratory therapist. One of the reasons Alligator Point has been a healthy place to live has been the clean air and lack of industrial air pollution. The unpaved section of Alligator Drive has made living on Alligator Point less healthy and less safe for many of the property owner residents. My house has a deck with a good view of the one-lane, unpaved section of Alligator Drive between George Boss and Tom Roberts roads. On days when the sea breeze is blowing strongly and the dirt on the unpaved road is dry, there are visible large clouds of road dust blown toward the houses next to the road, especially when large vehicles or boat trailers pass by. It is worse on weekends and holidays when the traffic is heavier. The people living in those close to the road houses must find it impossible to keep road dust off the surfaces inside, and they probably are not able to enjoy having their windows open on nice weather days. However, the more serious concern is what consequences those people may face from their exposure to the road dust they breathe on a daily basis over time. Franklin County should not consider it acceptable to simply leave Alligator Drive an unpaved road, dirt road, now or in the future, in the event, future storm damage, even if they run out of Ballpoint Trust fund monies for repair and paving. Please take a look at the links and information that I provided with the, what I submitted to your packet. I did not copy those, although I have copies with me that I would like to pass to be included in the minutes if possible. Silicosis is the disease entity that we're talking about here. It's a condition that's caused by inhaling too much silica over a long period of time, or even a short period of time. You can have damage to your lungs, even if you have a great amount of it coming at you that you're breathing within a few weeks or months after high levels of exposure. And this acute silicosis condition progresses rapidly."
Ma'am, your three minutes are up. I will, I will speak for myself, I did read what you sent to the, or the information was passed to the commissioners, and I looked at the photos and everything else, so we're aware of the situation, or I am. I'm sure the Commissioners looked at it also.
Hopefully, you will also look at the links I, I've submitted. I would like to make one more comment, just for myself, because I'm, I'm not right there at the road, but I have to use that road. And there are people that are sitting on their porches, right there next to the road, with their dogs, and I feel like I am being forced to cause them harm by driving my car along there and causing that dust to go at them and into their lungs.
We are aware of the situation. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment?
Susan.
Well, just wanted to say that, you know, we're, we're, there is, there could be litigation, you need to be aware of, you know, what is happening there. I live on a dirt road right by the, and Mariner's Circle, and, you know, the dust is detrimental to our health. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Yes.
Since there are no public comment, I'm making a motion that Mr. Bird be on the, the agenda next week.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda will be- Next on the agenda will be Mr. A.J. Smith, uh, Sheriff A.J. Smith.
Good morning, Board. How are y'all today?
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
My voice is a little scratchy, so forgive me. Uh, appreciate you. I think Ginger has, yep, she has some copies of what we're requesting. Um, a one-time, uh, allocation for some improvements around the sheriff's office and particularly the jail. A lot of, I know we had a, we talked a while back and we had a little PowerPoint. We showed you a lot of the things that needed replacing, that were outdated, broken, not working. And some of the stuff we had fixed and where, one of the pages, I think, will show you some of the money we requested that we had received from other, other areas and we had used, how we used it. But, uh, some of the things that need to be replaced are outdated technology. And there's actually a couple of building, building projects that we want to talk about. But, um, you'll see those in blue. And probably, we tried to increase our level of service throughout the county and be much more visible, have a higher level of professionalism. And a lot of this starts at the sheriff's office. And so, we've, we've done a lot over the last year and a half. Actually, the fence construction is done that we, uh, that y'all allowed us to take from the work camp. That's done. Now, all we have to do is purchase some gates and put the gates up. And then, the complex will be secure from anybody just driving through like they're able to do now. And, you know, it's been one of the issues we had with contraband. And you'll see there's another, uh, quite expensive item on here, an X-ray machine, which would completely probably eliminate items coming into the jail. And, uh, that's, those are very expensive machines, but they're certainly worth their money as far as cutting down on contraband, just like what happened the other day when we had contraband come into the jail and, uh, kind of the catastrophic occurrence that occurred from one small piece of K-two, probably no longer than half of my index finger. These guys took one puff off of it and, uh, were, a lot of them were rendered unconscious. One of them almost, uh, died from, so just a very small piece of contraband, which, uh, you wouldn't catch unless you had an X-ray machine. And so, that's, uh, one of the things on there as well. Of the camera system, which I think is another piece of technology. There are a lot of areas in the jail that did not have cameras, where we couldn't see what was going on. And of course, that's, uh, safety for the deputies working in there so they can be seen. And of course, it's also a liability issue if something were to occur. So, we're, we're replacing that. And, uh, we're hoping that we're, uh, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna replace that. And I think that'll, that'll reduce a lot of our liability and make the deputies that work there feel better and be more secure. Dispatch, there's, that jail's almost thirty years old. And the reason we're trying to do a lot of this stuff is we think we have a lot more life left in it. So, we'd like to do some of these things and, and not have to worry about building a new jail. A lot of jail, a lot of places are building new jails that are a lot newer than the ones that we have. So, we feel like the structure's very sound. It just needs, you know, like I said, technology updates like cameras. Dispatch is inside the jail, which I'm sure you're aware of. And they're really in a very confined space there. And they need new furniture. And some of the technology just there is already outdated as far as, uh, dispatch with the deputies and stuff like that. We've gone to a new CAD system, which Bay County gave us, but we had to get modems in the cars. That cost a little bit of money, you'll see that on there. But it's enabled us to have a better reporting system, be able to give better stats about what's going on. Automatic vehicle locator, which tells us where the cars are all times of the day and night, how fast they're going, if their blue lights are activated, which is a, a pretty neat feature to have so that we have accountability of what's going on. And also, uh, if some deputy were to get in some kind of, um, situation, we would know where they are, even if they couldn't talk on the radio. So, uh, those are some of the things that we've accomplished and already paid for. But the piece inside dispatch is critical as far as dispatching to those deputies on the, on the street. We talked about the X-ray machine. Inside the jail, and I know we talked about this before, there is, up in dispatch, there's a control panel, probably about as big as this podium. And it controls all the cells with inside the jail. With it, you touch it and the doors close. Back in the control room, in the center of the jail, there is another one where the, um, control, where the deputies will sit to watch the pods and to activate, uh, close, open and close the doors. That piece of equipment does not function all the time. They press the buttons and the doors don't open to the cells, which again, if there was some, just like the situation we had the other day, if the doors wouldn't open, then they have to go get the keys, open the doors. It's a, a safety issue. So, what we're hoping to do is, like I said, that's thirty years old. Upgrade that with touch technology. It would definitely be something like a computer screen, where all they do is have to touch it to open whatever door they want to touch. So, again, we don't have to build a new jail, but we do have to bring in new technology so that what we have will continue to work and be much safer, uh, for the folks that work there. The control, the control room inside the jail is basically a platform, probably about twice as high as where you're sitting commissioners. It is not secure. Inmates can walk in there. If there's inmates inside the jail that are outside the dorm, trustees, are they're being moved? All they have to do is take two steps and they're in there. It is not secure. What we want to do, modern jails, their control rooms are totally isolated from the other parts of the jail. There's a door that opens and locks so that the control officer inside there is not at risk from being overtaken by inmates or anything like that. We need to harden this thing, and we're gonna do the work ourself. We just need materials, just kind of like what we're doing in medical. So, what we want to do is do a build out there, uh, probably block it in, put a door on it so that people can't come in and out freely and that it's much more safe and secure. Uh, just like the medical build out, we, we had, or we have a room that is probably about the size of an oversized closet where medical works out of. It is totally inadequate what we've done since we started our video visitation. We've taken that area and we're gonna turn it into a medical ward so that the nurses have room to see patients. And we can have other equipment in there. And then, the head nurse will use the old office as, as her, uh, record-keeping area and a place for her to, uh, handle confidential matters that may occur. So, those are some of the ways that we're taking the existing structure and making it better without re- without building a new facility. Uh, one of the things that we also want to do, we have two portable buildings that I think we got from the school many, many years ago. Investigations is in one. Our evidence is in one. The roofs leak. They're really, really in terrible shape. It's a shame to try to put any money into them because it probably costs more than they're worth to try to fix them. So, we'd like to build a building to house investigations, evidence, and some of the other, uh, some of the other functions within the jail. We're, we're certainly a lot bigger than we were when that facility was built. But we've tried to take the room that we have and utilize it to the best of our abilities. Uh, let's see, what else? Anything else you can think of? I know it's, I know it's a lot here and, uh, it's a lot to take in. But we've, we've tried to do whatever we can with the resources that we've, you know, out of our operating budget, we've done a lot of stuff. And I know you've given us some stuff. So, we just want to make it better, provide a higher level of service, keep our folks that work there safe and keep the public safe. And so, as a result of that, there's some things that we can do there to, to make it better. And these are, these are some of those things. Staff has talked about it. And, uh, we spent a lot of time looking at it and seeing, you know, the best way to do some of this stuff. And I think, uh, these are some changes that need to be made, a one-time deal. And then, we'll, we'll have a facility that we can continue to use for years to come instead of scrapping it and starting over.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Can I address the sheriff?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Uh, I got some questions. But first of all, uh, I haven't talked, usually I go around to the constitutional officers and talk to them about their budgets before, you know, we go into budget. And that's the way I like to do it. I like to know what we're hitting. And, um, I would suggest that between now and budget, when we decide when budget is, I, I suggest that each individual commissioner goes over there and sits down, talks with the sheriff.
Yeah, I'd love, love for you to do that.
And let him show you everything. Because what I would like to be, to see you do, Sheriff, and this is just me. And I know you're doing a good job, and your job is to protect the people of Franklin County. Just like our job is to help you. Uh, but that is a significant increase in your budget.
Yes.
And what I would like to do, and I'm just gonna tell you how, how I feel about it. Um, I would like for you to prioritize
Okay.
what you need done the most.
Okay.
And then, with this hundred and eighty-four thousand on the body, the X-ray body thing, is there any grant that can help you with it?
Well, actually, uh, we are, actually have an intern on staff this summer. And he's looking, he's actually helping us look for some grants. So, I would, I would hope, it would be great if we could find a DOJ grant. So, we are looking at that. Certainly, in the list of priorities, that probably won't be at the top because there are other things that we need more. And we're doing other things, you know, we've done some other things to try to tighten, tighten up our facility there and keep stuff out. So, that would probably be further down. It'd be great if we had it. But, you know, having space for staff to work, being able to, uh, protect the folks that work there through technology and stuff like that, probably that's the priority.
Well, the people that, um, the surrounding counties that have the X-ray machine, um, um, how did they pay for them? Do you know?
What's that? Yeah, they're looking to see. I mean, I know that in Walton County, we had bought one, but we just bought it, you know? And that was, but we haven't found any grants yet, but we just started looking. So, we're, we're certainly, we would love to be able to do it with a grant and not have to...
Yeah.
You know, cause we have, uh, Ginger's been very successful. You know, we just did our body cam grant. We're gonna be getting body cams for all the deputies, which is another, uh, I think, a really great thing for the county. That was a grant. We have a couple of other grants. So, we're, we're gonna continue to look and, um, if there's anything that we can do on this list through a grant, we're certainly gonna do that.
Okay. Um, let me ask you another question, um, and I'm still on this hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars cause that's a pretty good chunk of money.
Yeah, they're expensive machines. They're, they're really, really expensive.
But my, my thing would be to buy that kind of equipment. If we do not have a grant for it, to me, it would be better to buy it outright. Would it be better to buy it outright or to finance it?
Yeah.
Like I said, there's a lot of questions I would like to ask the sheriff and Ginger. And I'm gonna go over there one day, uh, can't be this next two weeks. I won't be home hardly any. But after that, I want to go over there and sit down with these sheriffs and Ginger.
I'd love, I'd love for y'all to come and, and we can talk about it and show you what we've done there. And I think once you see some of these projects that, that we're talking about, you'll have a better idea of what we're trying to do. And, and you'll see, cause when the jail was built thirty years ago, there was a, we were in a different time then. Things were different. Inmates were different. The number of inmates we were housing was different. And, you know, we're, we're not Mayberry anymore. I mean, we have murderers in our jail.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and I want to make sure that, uh, we have the most safe and secure facility that we can. You know, we had, uh, Waukesha County had three, couple of more murders escaped last year. I don't know if you remember that, took them a long time to catch them. Washington County or Holmes County had the same thing, guys climbed out the roof. So, I want to make sure that we don't have something like that. I want to make sure our building is as tight and secure as it can be and as safe for the folks that have to work in there with, with, uh, some very dangerous and desperate people at times.
And I'd like to say, I appreciate you coming in this morning and explaining to us, uh, the requested budget increase. And I have to also go along with Commissioner Sanders, if the individual commissioners could go by and talk with you and see what we can do. It is a significant budget increase. So, we're gonna have to work through some of these things. And as, as Commissioner, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Sanders. We'll see what we can prioritize and, you know, may, maybe have to be done incremental.
Yeah. No, and I'm totally good with that. We just kind of wanted to let you see what we were looking at. We will prioritize it. And then, if, if you do have time, before we come back, please, um, I'll make, anytime that, that you're available, I'll make myself available so that I can give you a personal tour, show you what we're doing and, uh, show you what we've already done too. I mean, the place, I think, looks amazing. We cleaned up the back. There's a fresh coat of paint everywhere. Uh, when I moved in the jail, there was graffiti on the walls inside, you know, back in the dorms. Nothing, nothing like that. The floors you can eat off of. I mean, it's, uh, staff has done a great job of pulling things together and making it look like a very professional, uh, organization, so, and, uh, building. So, please, we'd love for you to come and see what we're doing.
And thank you again for coming in this morning.
Okay.
The board recessed five minutes.
Can I ask a question for you before you go? As we're sitting down, I, I'll just let you know that there's some redundancies I might ask you about.
Okay.
But my, my thought on some of this process is, and I don't, I know that this board knows, they've been doing it a lot longer than I have, but it's our jail and it's your office.
Right.
So, I, I would prefer to see some of this capital stuff, knowing it's prioritized, but not necessarily an increase to your budget.
Right.
Capital outlay stuff that we need to take care of.
I mean, it's a, this stuff is a one-time deal. We won't be asking for it ever again.
Right.
You know, as long as I'm sheriff. And like I said, it's, it's a way to keep using the facility we have without, you know, starting over, without building something new. Because I think we're still, we're about a hundred capacity. Our population's about eighty. And it fluctuates sometimes a little bit lower. So, I think, you know, we're, we're not over, we don't have too many inmates at the jail. Want to accommodate them, so that's a good thing. We just need to fix some things that are broken and make some space, uh, so that we can do our job better and provide a, a better service to the inmates and to the county.
Yeah.
Let's hear my question. Sheriff, as soon as possible, I see a accident waiting to happen from what you see. I would like for you to get the calls of them doors, whatever, own them people, them doors up and send it to the board so we can get that fixed or anything can happen.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's been that way since I've been there. And it's about a forty thousand dollar expenditure. We've already looked at it and we're, uh, so, yeah, we can, that probably, that'll be at the, that'll certainly be at the top of the list, the control panel.
We need to fix that, cause if, if a fire get up, gonna be out more money than that.
Well, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of, uh, ironic when we had the fire. Y'all remember the fire we had in the jail? Well, it wasn't, maybe a couple of months before that, I was asking staff. I'm like, "Do our stand pipes outside the jail work?" And they're like, "Oh, no, it doesn't work." And I said, "What do you mean it doesn't work?" "Well, the pump station's been broken for ten years." And I'm like, "Really?" And they're like, "But we'll never have a fire." I said, "You can have a fire even though it's the smoke that kills you, not the fire. And we're in a confined area." And so, then what happened? The dryer caught on fire, we had to evacuate the jail. And so, you know, fortunately, nobody was hurt, but staff was like, "Oh, well, maybe some of this stuff is important. And if it's here for a reason, it needs to work." And so, you know, that's, that's kind of why we're doing this kind of stuff here. So, thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Massa, you got any comment?
I'm probably going out and visiting with him, sit down with him.
Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. The board recessed five minutes.